Okay, for city financial advisor Chip Schultz.
First item is approval of the official statement. I think everybody has a copy of that. That's the operating document for the on the sheet okay of the twenty twenty two project mix. They can do it rather than having to report it for their. Dorsey Whitney as the city's bond accounts on disclosure council put together the first part of it. We had that open and they can apply the last part entitled as ten X A. There's a resolution from Dorsey approving it. I'd encourage you to look over it early. If you have any input on it, please let Ash know, Sarah, and I'll make those.
The motion to approve is motion number twenty five twenty two C.
Twenty five twenty two C. Moved by.
I'll second it.
Second, how do you vote? Russell?
Yes.
Doley?
Yes.
Kapatri?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Kalba?
Yes.
Okay, B?
Just one other question on the financing, the next step would be blocking it until it's transparent September ninth.
September.
So that we have a lookout for that and the closing was to occur on September twenty fourth. So that's that. So the funding for these was used to be, I will be direct, I don't have it together, but I bet.
Oh, yeah.
It's on the agenda, I think, just to bring it up as a discussion item. I think we also need to provide input. Need to get some direction from council in terms of what you want to see, what kind of ranges you're open to for either salary and just operating budget adjustments sep- separated from any potential equipment needs for the respective departments. And then I'll compile data based on that. So it's just all this organized data that I'll provide and then bring it to you as council to review and input and.
Sure.
I welcome any discussion on the topic. So I don't have an apple or anything to do with it if you have to say it.
What, I guess what I'd like to see is, um, instead of just us handing this off to Chip, is have Ash get the numbers, all the numbers, you know, whether salary, equipment, whatever, work it out. Let's pretend we don't have a Chip Schultz to begin with. Okay, let's just not hand everything off him. Uh, I'm a, I'm a big believer that we take advantage of his goodwill for the city way too much. Have our, our finance guy, uh, work those numbers and show us what it's gonna take, just what the city would have to do to make this work. You know, and then if it comes to where, you know, we would have to get him involved, then we could look at if the council wants to move in that direction, but I think we need to see what you can come up with to begin with.
I think we already have done that in the past and just all we're doing now is with the four hundred thousand we issued for the waste development has to be renewed. This is a time to renew. And then we're including the street development and the rescue unit with the same concept, trying to avoid going into the next year with the new changes in the legislature. So now.
Might be taking that option way this year or so. That's the time when this is a consideration.
So now we need to kinda, he's working with the police chief to get this information, the numbers. If the information match was what I had five years ago, there will be a four hundred thousand. And then I gave him the numbers for the street based on the talk to the public work director and he gave me his vision. I gave it to Chair and then I gave him the vision of the rescue unit. So these things, we need the council blessing to formalize it in one loan issue, one bond issue. Because we have the time sensitive now. See what I mean? The concept of the police department was just, we are the renew of what we have done four or five years ago. Providing the lump sum of four hundred thousand toward equipment and salary and this stuff, and it did work for four or five years. Now you can renew it, but he has to meet with the police chief and kinda formalize that. I think he had some meetings. I'm not sure.
I think it's.
It's just my, my view is that nobody should be meeting with Chip except you, Ash.
And I did.
I mean, that's it.
That's why we're here tonight.
You get, you get all the numbers, you, you guys get together.
Sure.
You know, because if we do a four hundred thousand dollar bond, that's not gonna cover all three of those departments.
No.
Right, something's gonna change.
Yes.
You know, so what is it gonna change? Do we even have an idea?
I gave him the number. I gave him the number, yes. We have, uh, for the street, we had, I gave you it. See?
Just north of, it depends what we're talking about.
Yes.
Is that, is it salaries or is it just the tree removal? Is it a truck?
Yeah, what's it all for? That's, that's kinda what we need.
Yeah, tree removal.
Would separate it out between the, there'd be a taxable financing for operating much dollars, or there'd be a tax exempt for equipment?
Yeah.
So you wanna try to maximize the tax exempt because it's a little bit right.
I think the why, why we, we voted on the agenda tonight, just give the council blessing. You don't really have to be involved with it or anything. We just need your blessing of what we're trying to do. I met with them chair last week. And we're gonna gather more of the information to go to September meeting and give you the outlook for it. We have, I met with the public work director to get the needs of what we need, future needs, not.
Is it all the same? I mean, is every, every department getting the same thing, salary and equipment in there or, cause we won't know that.
Rescue would be similar, uh, street, not necessarily.
Me, I, I guess I'd like to hear what my other companions up here feel because that's my idea. I'd like to see you put together something and present it to the council and say, you know, if we didn't have a Chip Schultz here, this is what we're looking at.
Yes.
You know, I know we got a bond and everything like that, but what would it look like if we didn't have Chip working on it for us? What, what are we gonna do? Are we looking at levy raising six dollars just to get all this?
But we, I, I would explain why we're here tonight. It's just the idea is we need to get a loan, you know, and we're working on a timeline before we get to December. So we need the blessing and then the information that I gave it to Chair, I can share it with you right now. So you know already what we're doing. The issues of police is the same like we proposed four or five years ago and proposing again. With the street, we have a three project that Jim would like to see, but it's a big project.
Sure.
You know, not just five trees here, six trees here, it's a big project. We're talking about a couple hundred thousand dollar.
Okay.
Guarantee, you know, and he wants to get a truck. So we're talking for two to three hundred dollar. That's three. Rescue unit, he proposed to you last meeting what his point of view of increase of little bit of the salary and he will not upgrade some physical equipment too. So we talked at around eighty to a hundred thousand dollar.
I don't know what the question is, but so what is that?
Uh, that did not include, well, we need to purchase a new type one ambulance which is gonna be in the range of two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand. So I think that should be a separate issue.
Yes, on the rotation, which is not happening now. All we're talking about is the salary. He proposed to you last meeting, his vision of the salary.
Right.
That might be next year or?
Well, every.
Every five years.
Every time we wait, if, or every, every way to do that, yeah, we're gonna pay more and more.
So we were really heading into just the police, but we thought we get one loan, one foundation.
So what's our loan amount? Is anybody else kinda thinking?
Well, and are we looking at, uh, are we just looking at a bond and then we're gonna raise levy? Are we gonna dip down our reserves?
That's.
Uh, percentage wise, I mean, are we looking at taking a quarter million out of reserves and then how is, how does that look with our levy? Versus if we take a half million out of reserves, how's that look with the levy or none out of the reserves? How's it look with the levy? I mean, is that what we're kinda getting at? We're gonna put together some sort of an options to bring to the table?
That's what I would, yeah, cause I, I wouldn't, I encourage you not to follow it.
And that's where we need the chip here to come up with this. I gave him practically all he needed on the public work and the rescue. And I think he needs to finish up some stuff with the police beside what we have originally established. And we'll come to you in September with those scenarios that we need to break down. If you wanna use reserve, if you don't, if you wanna do, this has to come from a chair because that's where your bond issue is gonna be structured.
So we don't have any other way to do this except bond for, we go into debt?
Yes, absolutely. And that's where Chip needs to get in because it's not a budgeting line, this capital improvement. You know, just having to get some of the salaries included because right now you can do. Next year I doubt it. Or we doubt it, we don't know. But this year you can.
Yeah, I know. Sure.
So trying to accelerate really and do it this way where we, we don't know what next year is gonna happen.
And this only, this doesn't take care of our long term. This is just for however long the bond, and then once that bond runs out, we're gonna get another one.
Exactly.
Unless we get some of these projects going like our, uh, certified site, you know, maybe we get some business there.
You being off. Yes, and you being off some of the.
That tracks the traffic study. That's why we're doing it. It's cause we don't, didn't have that vision.
Value is a.
Yes.
We didn't have those options. We weren't given that chance to come up with those options. So we borrow first, you know, so.
It's a whole. Absolutely.
Well, and I don't know how many, what's our bonds that are gonna expire?
If your debt service falls out, so there's different bond issues for a fire truck or that exists and it's like oxygen dates. But I take those into account, but I, I'd encourage cities to not bond professionals for operating costs.
Right.
I think like the tip fixtures, I'd change the approach after this week, I would not stop that early. You can't do that. It's not, it's not a good move.
And even some of the existing stuff that we have out there, it may come down where we have to refinance that and stretch it out even longer. So you may not be paying stuff off. That's where, that's where we're, we're in this issue.
Yeah.
Where that option of paying it off with we had a couple months ago could be gone now. Could be.
If it's gone, uh, rates have come back though, that's why it's.
So, yeah, yeah, that's a good.
Rates have come down in the past.
Yeah.
So visiting with Chip last, my, last week, we tried to put it on the agenda so we can solve that issue of the timing. He would like to present something in September, get the bond, I tell him you work on it and all this stuff. In the meantime, we need your blessing to, to continue doing what we're doing.
Are you getting anything for doing this for us?
I've, I've got limited capacity right now. No, I'm not.
Okay, that's the short answer is no.
And that's limited capacity right now is another, because the city's bond issues take up a lot of oxygen.
I, I bet, I bet, having.
It's just, uh, that's my time a little crunch, but, uh, that will modify.
Okay. When was the last time, Ash, that you met with all the department heads and sat down with them and just asked their wants, needs?
Yes.
And all that?
The department is sitting here. I talk to them daily. That's the public work director. I got all this information from him and I gave it to Chair. Got the rescue unit, I met with him, got the information, give it to him. I meet with them on a daily basis.
Okay, just so that is fresh and we're not using numbers from a year ago or whatever, cause things are gonna change.
No. That's exactly what we get the information. He made the proposal last meeting and we decided to go to Chair. James been talking to me.
I guess I just want it that Chip doesn't have to run people down.
No, no, actually, we were just heading toward the police issue and now we add it too. So we get the whole thing in a one bond issue.
If. Sure.
That's, that's the thing. I don't wanna, cause I know you've got other towns that you do business for and you shouldn't have to chase people to get information. So as long as that doesn't happen, it's up to you guys.
So that's really why we're here tonight, uh, get the blessing and try to fill this up before the end of the year.
Okay. Is there anything else you would like Chip, like?
Can we get you gift cards, gift, gift cards, Subway? Can we get you, give you a gift card somewhere?
So we'll continue. I will work with Chip. Hopefully by September, we'll be getting something going. That's what Chip told me last week.
I'll certainly do my best.
Yeah, I appreciate it. You know, you, you'll work as always, always highly.
What would help you with that? Like, do you need certain things by this time from who?
Okay. Create a thousand Jim for equipment. Is that a top? It's kind of a range or a top end of range? Let me just kind of rapid fire please. I'm still at a loss as to why we were paying for tree removal out of streets and roads.
And that's why we're getting into that bondage.
But I'm, I'm still at a loss of why it's coming out of streets and roads. And that is a three to five year estimate, not tomorrow, but a three to five year.
Exactly. That's why we're trying to get bondage to have that. So you gave me.
And that, equipment wise, you're probably eighty thousand. The rest of it's gonna be your trees.
Yeah. The number you gave me, I wrote it down and I gave it to him.
Equipment as Katie would be the top. Okay. So the ambulance, you've got the salary information. So I think I got that. I got it's an order in from the chiefs and we'll get to work on that.
Yes.
And it would be a range of scenarios. So we can't give you one scenario.
Sure. Will that be taken into account, you know, the possible changes with the, with, uh, the state and stuff and, and all that? I mean. See, this is just it, you know, it's like, I don't, I don't know if everybody here grasps just how much he's gotta look at when he does this, you know? And we just hammer his goodwill with this city and he does it cause he wants to help us, you know? And, and that's, that's the only part I don't like is we just, here you go, figure it out, figure it out for us. Um, so.
And Chip, when you do your figuring, can you add in what a fifty cent or a dollar levy would be too, instead of just strictly bond and loaning?
Well, we'll see. I mean, I mean, part of this, you're gonna be looking at potential dollars on the levy and how that's gonna affect it.
Yeah.
Could be more.
At the high end, when it's all combined, um, I, I think it's gonna be a levy patch. You, you might be a little comfortable with it.
It's, it's gonna be because of this, you know?
Yeah. But it's worth it, I think. If you give.
To a point, this is why we have budget stuff set up, you know, that's, that's why we do.
You will, you start from what, October?
Yeah, well, you know, and, and, you know, if, if we, if we have this information, we can think of, of different ways to, to bring it in revenue like, like we have, again, that certified site. I know, I know you're putting money out or potentially, but you gotta look at how much money you could get in. It doesn't solve our stuff right away, but down the road, you know, in three more years, I think it was, we would have had some of these, uh, TIF things paid off.
Right.
And we would have got more money into the general fund this way, but we, we gotta do this now and we can't wait. So now we're looking at increasing levy now. You know, so to a point, I get it, but are we doing the best thing for our citizens? There's people out there that can afford it, but are we thinking about the people that can't? You know?
Yeah. I'm saying, where's the study that we're working on now? We'll be seeing all the scenarios where you can choose.
And you're gonna have to do the scenario with, uh, with, uh, funding for Womboldt in this.
That's right.
So keep that in mind.
There's about fifteen minutes to it, not thirty.
Yeah.
And is this just a temporary fix? Are we gonna be looking at this next year or the year after, you know, before this TIF thing gets kinda swished around here?
It's a target, I guess, a multi-year solution. So this can help your budget operating, which focuses on operating needs through June thirty, twenty twenty nine. After that, let's try to get to a point where it's funded from regular operating dollars.
It's like what we first did, Corey, back when I first got on here. It covered so many years, but we didn't get anything put in place for what happens when that runs out. So that's kinda like, again, like you created, that's why we're looking at the traffic stuff out there, you know, cause that will hopefully generate something if we can do it. If we can get more businesses in here. That's, that's slow stuff, but hopefully it's longer term instead of just getting a, a loan basically to pay salaries and stuff, you know?
Right.
It's really, I mean, if you owned a business, would you get a loan to pay for salaries year after year after year? Probably not.
I think the hope is after June thirty, twenty twenty nine, less of the tax, the tax base would be used needed for TIF. At that point, more can fund, well, regular city operating budget.
Right.
And if we have the bond, it might not be as much.
Yes.
And then the next time, you know, less or none. Hopefully it gets to the point where, where we don't need Chip anymore.
Yeah. I don't think you're gonna see a scenario in this universe like that.
Thank you, Chip. You really made a big help and.
Anything else you need, Chip?
I'm sure there is.
I know.
Jim just stepped out.
Can, can you do six while he's out? I don't know how, you don't know.
Six.
Can you do that?
Yep, well, Sarah come up.
That way she's not sitting around her own mic. Oh, there he's coming back already, but sorry.
You about lost your position. Okay, go ahead, Jim. You gonna come up?
No, you're fine.
We tried, I tried to give him away.
Uh, okay, let's see. Um, well, first topic, I guess, on here is wastewater operator. Ash has, uh, Ash has hired a grade two wastewater operator from Casey to fill that position. Um, I don't know what, I don't know what the exact language and contract is with Repolar Group. I don't know what they were supposed to provide, but this individual is a grade two, not a grade three. So I think that is to be investigated.
Our lawyer's checking on it.
We talked to the.
He, he got the paperwork and he's checking on that, see whether we got, have to pay that or not.
And then, um, I met with people service today, gave them a walkthrough of the plant, um, a pretty in-depth walkthrough of the plant and ongoing issues and stuff like that, just so that they're aware. They weren't, the gentleman that's here was not a hundred percent sure of what you guys were wanting from them. So some conversation will need to be had with them as to what you are expecting them to provide so that they can actually give you a cost. Um, so I guess that covers the wastewater, um, side of it. He was given, um, six months probation, which, um, that needs to be in the language that that six months includes his grade three completion. In my opinion, it's my opinion.
Is that doable?
I think a little bit.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, supposedly according to this individual, he's got all of his CEUs that he needs turned in. So he should be able to test at any time. It's just passing the test.
So if we put in a six month thing, he's gotta have it done. You gotta keep in mind, are we gonna hold it to him? Are we gonna hold him to it? Or are you gonna do like we do other stuff and go, huh, we're okay with that?
Just keep in mind, you're gonna pay that individual and you're going to pay people service on top of that.
People serve, right.
Hopefully he'll get it passed by January ninth.
So how much do you want to put in it? That's entirely up to you.
Yeah, he, he has to decide which one to.
Uh, but there again, all of this has to meet the approval of the D M O and the court of directors. So keep that in mind as well. Um, and then part B is, uh, street labor. After going through all of the applications that I have, I have narrowed it down to one candidate. Um, his name is Tristan Johnson. He is a Stewart resident, um, holds a class A CDO, um, has the equipment background, um, from, uh, working for a couple of different boarding companies and stuff like that. So he's got backdoor experience, skid loader experience, um, like a class A CDO. Uh, it's been explained that, uh, a class or a grade one wastewater license will be required within one year. And, uh, I don't think that would be an issue.
Cool. With, with the wastewater, I know, you know, I had the, uh, joy of sitting in on some of those, uh, uh, things, uh, you know? Were all your questions answered with this guy? Yeah, and you?
Um, I mean, give or take, yeah. I mean, uh, like I said, he's a grade two. I know for a fact, grade three test is, it's not a walking part.
Right.
It is a lot of chemistry, a lot of biology. Um, so the individuals that I talked to, um, former employers, that may be a challenge.
Are those pre-test you can take too or not?
Yeah, there is, yeah. Yeah. And there's some, uh, Kurt Wood and D Mac both put on, uh, classes that you can take, pre-test classes and stuff like that, that, uh, lets you practice all the different math and, and that type of stuff that you need for that level testing.
How often can you take that test?
I believe you can take the test every fifteen days for three times. After three times, they require you to take a thirty hour class. And then you have two more chances. After that, you have to have expensive training. And then there's a thirty dollar testing fee every time you test.
He said he had the, uh, whatever, the curriculum hours or whatever it is.
CEU hours.
Um, but he hasn't tried to take it?
No. Not that I'm aware of, not that he relayed to us at the last time he spoke.
He didn't say, he just said that he had the time to, that he could go and take the test at any time.
We had a committee and we met, the committee was Mike Kalba, Kalkatry, Jim, Mayor, myself and Sarah. So we went through all the applicants and, uh, we met few times to get to this point that we were at right now. It's, uh, I wanna thank everybody who's participating in this whole thing. It's been an easy subject.
So I know, and you know, Jim's made the recommendation, you know, that we have six months and I, I would agree with that to get that. It's like, how serious are we gonna be on that? Because I mean, we waited what, a year and a half to really do anything, you know?
I, I gave you my notice, uh, July of twenty four, so.
I know. Yeah, so we waited quite a while. So if, if we got somebody that can't do it in six months, are we being fair to them? I mean, do we need to? Cause you know, we're gonna be paying this other company too. And I know we kinda looked at it, uh, uh, they had a certain amount, but that was just kind of not even coming in and doing anything. Can, can you explain, explain that a little bit better to me?
The, the paper that I got, um, a whole number out, fifty seven hundred dollars per month was the number that I saw on this document. And with that, they were going to provide a grade three operator for two part days per week. And then a grade four operator for four hours per week as a supervisor to basically do all of the necessary paperwork and to also oversee the operations of the plant as, and to help mentor a new operator or a grade two operator to get them to the testing point in grade three, um, for that, for that cost. But there is, with that, there was no maintenance, no servicing of any equipment.
Yeah.
That would fall to your operator that you hire if they're capable of doing that. Um, and then I visited with him today. I think the price he was going to work up was involving some, some maintenance and that type of stuff as well. Um.
Is that a hundred and fifty dollars an hour?
The after hours, after hours call rate is a hundred and fifty bucks per hour from the time that operator leaves wherever they live until they get back.
After hours. Sure.
That might be Valisca, Atlantic, Des Moines, wherever. The gentleman I was with today was out of Des Moines.
Who knows?
And I can tell you, just on average, I'm at the plant one night a week. Some trips in alarm or whatever and you have to go reset breakers or reset whatever. Some of it I can do from my phone at home.
Sure.
Um, but some of it, if it's something that requires a manual activation and you have to go to the plant, it'll, it's ten o'clock.
You're gonna be paying something no matter what. It's, it's gonna happen. So, you know?
Right.
And John had mentioned, wouldn't be till October first that he could actually start?
That's correct.
So would we start that six months on October first?
I would suppose, yeah.
So that means we would be paying double for. double for four months, if he met that requirement at the end of that six months?
Three months.
As long as Jim is here.
Oh, yeah, three months, three months.
As long as Jim is here, Jim signing is doing his job until then.
As long as I am here, I am the operator in direct responsible control.
But he would have to, essentially, we would hold him accountable till March, so we'd have the first three months of the year, where we'd have People Service potentially come in.
Yeah, and then. If he is showing interest and going getting his, uh, CEU hours and applying and going taking a test and all this stuff. If we get to January and Jim is not here, we have People's Company lined up as Michael was to line up for them to be the backup. Until John gets his grade three. So it's just a matter.
Not until he gets the grade three for three more months. Because if we give him six months and we're not gonna hold him to it right now, we might as well not even write that in there. If we're just gonna say, well, you can take as long as you want to get it, then we might as well not write a six-month.
We usually write a year, because we're just gonna have the second back for a year. You can give him a year if you want, you know, that's kinda, so you're gonna have to look at it again if you don't wanna, you wanna give him a time period. Because as we discussed, that we're having a backup plan of Peoples. Peoples are not gonna come here, do it for us on a full-time, we're just gonna get him to just sign the report as the proposal that we had and we shared with the committee.
There's a whole lot more than just signing the report.
Yeah.
I think whatever it takes, Jim, you know, it's kinda, I'm trying to explain to the council what the committee did to come here tonight. We hiring John as a grade two.
Right.
We will work with him to get to be grade three. He indicated to us that he would do everything possible to get it. He passed one and two, he think he can pass three. I can guarantee that he would pass or not, I don't know.
Right.
But we hope he will pass, if we hire him. And then we had Plan B to go with that, Bebo's service, to if we get to January and Jim decided that's it. We'll get Bebo's to start to do the things that required by the state.
Right.
While J- John is going through his process of getting grades. That's what the committee decided, that's why we came here tonight, was that concept.
And as I mentioned before, you cannot wait till the last minute, because anything that you propose, People Service coming in January one or whatever, has to meet the approval of the DNR prior to doing that.
I would say go ahead and say, John, try to have it by at least March, that'd be six months. And he could, like I say, you can do it three times, have him try it right away after we hire him.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that.
Just see what, I mean, they, they tell you how many you missed, say if you missed five, well, studies more, go back.
The other thing that needs to be reiterated with him is he will work on the public works side as well as the sewer side and vice versa. And that's why those two guys are required to have a grade one. And Josh has already expressed interest in going past that once he gets to the grade one. Um, so, just so that they're clear that it's gotta go both ways or it won't work.
And, and John already had the full list of everything that you've done, or a lot of, lot of it anyway, and what we expect from you.
Well, it's a list, right, yeah. Yes. Yes.
And we decided to pay him thirty dollars per hour until he gets grade three, that would go up to thirty-five now. That's what the committee is proposed, and we offered him the job subject to the Council of group. Then in regard to the wastewater, the street guy that Jim has met with him is proposing to give him twenty-five dollars per hour. For the street guy, you wanna give him one year to get his sewer license?
Get his grade one, just like we did with Josh.
Okay, that guy will get one year to get his grade one. For, uh, John, you wanna give him just six months, you don't wanna give it a year?
The only thing I can caution you is just keep in mind your outweigh of, of resources until he is a grade three. You're gonna be paying People Service after January, uh, it's gonna be pretty steady pretty quick.
So.
I would really like to know what our contract said with, uh, Palmer.
We talked to the lawyers, the mayor and I, about that subject, and he's gonna, uh, take the whole thing look into with the contract and all the stuff.
So we don't even know if it said to give us a grade three? Or did, was it just to find us somebody? I mean, that would, should be pretty simple. All the lawyer stuff, they could figure out, but just to know, did we require them to give us a grade three or just find us somebody? That should be pretty simple, I would think.
Yeah, the mayor and I took them before the meeting, so we didn't have time to really.
Tristan, what's his start date?
Um, he could start probably, uh, September fifteenth.
Fifteenth. So do we need two motions then?
We can have one motion, but, and the only thing, we give him one year to one guy, the other guy, six months or one year.
Well, the wait, the grade one, that's not a, a necessity.
That's what I'm afraid of, so.
No, it's just.
So that's why they get a year.
Yeah, the other ones are the same.
This other one.
Well, if it's a grade one, he has to have so much time in service before he can get tested.
Yeah, this other guy's got the time.
Yeah.
And it saves us a lot of money if he gets it the sooner, sooner the better.
Right.
It's.
So I think we're not, I mean, it's not like we're comparing apples to apples.
No, I'm just, I'm just throwing things on the, so you guys can just see the whole picture.
I think it's fair for the six months to get the grade three.
Okay.
Okay.
And one year to get the grade one.
And we paying him thirty dollars and then thirty-five when he gets a grade, grade three.
That's grade three. Okay.
And for the, uh, other guy is twenty-five and one year. We need a motion.
Then he'll, he'll get a raise once he gets his grade one, is that correct? Would Josh get a raise at the end of the year if he has?
That's how I had it set up. Two years ago, when I brought it to you.
I think that's what we did, yeah.
Every, every grade level was two bucks an hour.
Yes, we have it in the minute.
Yeah, okay.
And then one other thing, just for conversation's sake, somebody, whoever you so choose, is going to need to have a pesticide license too. I have a Department of Agriculture license, so to be able to spray weeds and, and right of ways and everything else, so keep that in mind.
Is that an incent, like, is there a incentive as far as pay bump, if they have that?
I think I had that listed, I think that was fifty cents an hour.
Could be, uh, I mean.
I think that's, it's on the list that I gave you.
It's somewhere out there.
Is that something that you can make the recommendation if there's someone that you feel?
It's, I guess, that's up to you guys, whoever, I mean, normally it's a street guy that's, that's got it. Bob and I both had it at one time, so.
So any, anybody, you know, once this Tristan gets hired, he could go do it, you know?
Yeah, but I mean, there's more to it than what you think there is, but.
Sure, sure.
Does Josh have his?
No, not yet.
So you're the only one currently?
I'm the only one who carries licenses for anything.
Sure.
We need a motion.
I'll move. To hire both of the, the operator and, uh, street labor.
Give a second.
And that's with the six months for the, whatever.
Whatever I said, but God forbid.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, so how you vote, Russell?
Yes.
Doley?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Kalbar?
Yes.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Saint Center, Sarah?
So I only got two copies of this printed out, it's lovely, huh?
That looks delicious.
Thank you guys for getting me.
Oh, this is all one, one thing. Say, hmm?
So, that is the ceiling of my loft at the Saint Center. Um, I have had the sprinkler system company come in, and that's why there's a hole in the ceiling now. Um, just to make sure that it wasn't their equipment that was leaking. Uh, it was not, I looked up there too, completely dry, honestly, it looked great up there, so the next option was just that there was some hot air that got stuck up there, and the rest of the building is cool enough that it just created some hole. Um, I, I have a wedding September thirteenth that has already, honestly, been through the wringer with the other venue that she was supposed to have. Um, so that's why I'm coming to you to ask for, um, fourteen hundred dollars is the quote that I got from a, a contractor that I know, and I forgot to print that out for you guys, I did have it on my phone if you wanna see it. Um, I realize I just got a, a TIF check for fifteen thousand dollars, um, but at, at this point, my, my insurance for the building itself is twenty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And that was from twelve thousand dollars a year. And that's not a plethora of other operating costs. So I have those, if you'd like to hear about them.
So what, what's their, what's their objective? What, what's their goal? How are they gonna, what, where'd they tell you how they're gonna fix this?
I also had Rainbow Remediation come in and kinda give me an idea of what their process was, and they're like, we pretty much won't come back for anything less than ten grand. And that would, they would close it off, they would take out all the drywall. Um, he said, I can't tell you this, but pretty much, if that's what we need quickly, then it's painting and fixing the drywall. So he would wipe it all down, clean it up, fix the drywall, um, paint it. I think there's like three layers of paint that it's asking for.
For the fourteen hundred?
For the fourteen, yeah.
For the fourteen hundred.
Okay.
And then how to remediate that going forward? Has there been any thought on that or?
Um, so. Right, so the idea is just to make sure that there's airflow going through there. The loft kinda has like a twelve to fourteen inch space that holds air right there, so it kinda just either put in a ceiling fan, which is obviously electrical and more drywall, and so I have a couple like floor fans that are pretty powerful, and I kinda just pushing the air as much as I possibly can. It's, it's never happened before, this is the first issue I've had, so. That's why I automatically went to the DeMaranville, which is my sprinkler system company, and I'm like, there's a leak, and they're glad of it, so.
Wow.
It's just an airflow.
I guess that's what we thought, yeah.
It's just an airflow issue.
Wow, that's wonderful.
Okay.
The last wedding I had was July nineteenth, and it was seventy-six degrees in there by the time they left. It was, it was pretty warm, so I'm guessing that's what happened, is that, that air just kinda trapped over there, and then I, you know, the, the building's at sixty-seven, sixty-eight on an overall basis.
Hmm. Okay. Okay.
Do you know what?
And how, can they, how quick can they get to this?
Um, that's why I went with this guy, he is gonna get me in up in the next couple of weeks.
Oh, okay.
So I have to have a little bit of time to clean up, cause I'm guessing there's gonna be some drywall dust though.
Sure. Okay.
We can flip fourteen hundred, can't we?
I think, I think so.
Yeah, the dollar amount is not huge, and it just, the reason that I asked Sarah to come to the meeting, because this is completely away from the TIF. They're green, you know, this has to be Council of group saying.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't have a problem with that, so I would.
And, yeah, the dollar amount is not, she talked to me on Friday and I told her, it's working out very good, because we can get it on Monday, you know?
I would. Make a motion to do it. One thing I do want to do, put in that motion, is that you also check into some remediation, get some ideas, you know, because floor fans, you know, it's gotta be remediated better, just in case, you know, just has somebody look at it.
And that's why he said, kind of, the ceiling fan up in the loft would move the air.
Oh, up there, okay, okay.
Um, to kinda keep that process, um, from happening. Last time I was up here, you asked for a quote for the washer and dryer?
Yep.
I've got that for you. And I don't, I don't want anything moved on that, I will, I'm totally fine with doing it at my house.
So, in, reason why I visited with Sarah, if you guys wanna look at that, I visited with Sarah and, and, um, asking, you know, when they have weddings and the linens and everything else, she takes that to her personal residence and does all that laundry. And that's their own personal washer and dryer. Um, so I asked her, I said, you wanna maybe look at a washer and dryer and, and the plumbing and everything to, to do that, cause.
And that price is like with the washer and dryer.
Right, right, that's just Miller's part of, yeah, just, just plumbing it, so.
Yeah.
Um, something that we need to think about too, um, I wouldn't expect anybody to take stuff like that, cause that puts a strain on, um, her washer and dryer as well. You know, so, something that we need to probably talk about and, and get figured out at some point too.
If I had bigger issues, a laundry room with doors and things that weren't taken care of, I would much rather.
Right, right.
If you were gonna give me money for that, I'd rather use it for something that is actually on the building that will preserve it.
Sure. Sure.
We have a motion by Kalbar to approve the fourteen hundred dollar.
I'll second it.
Okay, how you vote, Russell?
Yes.
Doley?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Kalbar?
Yes.
Same so.
Thanks, Sarah.
Now, we don't have a public hearing, but I wanna address the issue that we had an employee verbally harassed at the front desk, and this isn't the first time it happened. And I've been harassed by this same person out front before. And I'm asking Sarah if she can get a camera hooked up with our other cameras here at the front desk and the sign, possibly saying, you know, harassment or foul language can be used in the city. And, an elected official was harassed at the parking lot out here a week or two ago, and Chief Reha's gonna check the video on in for me too.
Okay, let me get it.
Anything else?
Nope.